Okay, now we're recording.
Oh no, go off camera.
Oh, everybody's off camera.
Hi Joe, hi team, hi Cameron.
Hi.
So we'll start for real in a second when everyone else arrives, but I guess we, I will start my little intro because it'll be recorded anyways. In saying that, obviously, one of the things I pride myself about in this, in this thing that I've built is that I alone am not the person who helps anybody. And that it's really a committee and a team of experts doing what they do best. And breathwork is a great example of that because I actually have my own sort of somatic response to breathwork, which isn't always. Like Kelly and I were doing it recently with Tim and her experience and my experience couldn't be more different because we're just different. But it is such a powerful and important tool and one that I highly recommend. Hello Jenna and hello Kendall, that I highly recommend that everybody learn, do and all that jazz. And so Tim is newer to the team. And I'm gonna let Tim do all the talking and all the explaining, but I'll just say a few things. He comes to us with global experience, which is very exciting. And one of the things I really enjoy about the way Tim approaches breathwork is that it's very practical. And while I had, I did a LinkedIn Live earlier this week with Patrick. And he was saying how like woo woo I am. I actually don't consider myself really woo woo at all. But I think that Tim's version of breathwork is that beautiful fusion between understanding how this can help you in a corporate setting, while also still being really, um, at its heart, breathwork is pretty, well, it's woo woo and it isn't like, it's, it's proven, it's scientifically proven to help in all the ways that can help. But it also has a little sense of, shouldn't I just take a, you know, shouldn't I just take a Valium instead? Shouldn't I just take a Xanax and go move on with my day? The answer is no. Um, so more people I'm sure will trickle in, but without further ado, Tim, if that's cool with you, I am just going to kind of turn it over to you to talk about yourself, to talk about breathwork. And then we'll do some breathing, in which case you might see me guys turn off my camera so I can lay down. But I just want to really give you the, the whole of this time. So I will hand it over to you and thank you for being here.
Thank you Rebecca for introducing me. So my name is Tim Vanderfleet. I'm Dutch. I live in Amsterdam, the Netherlands. And, um, um, I, I come from a corporate background or more the trading background. So I've been living for many years on a really high adrenaline state. By the way, is my mic, can you all hear me good? Right? Yeah, great. Um, plus I have five kids, so you could say I know what stress is. And I know what it means to not have time, you know, or to have little time. Some people, they can take three hours to have some form of routine. Most people can't. And, um, um, my work is, I know it's weird, it's breathwork and cold exposure. So you could really say that I sell thin air plus pain. I travel the world doing breathwork and then I put them in an ice bath, you know? So, uh, it's a, it's a weird world. I'm sure you're aware of it, like the global, global things are shifting. It's really a weird world, but, um, breathwork is just amazing when, if I can just talk about myself just a little bit, you know? Um, I used to think that breathwork was like one, two hours of breathing and people kicking and screaming and stuff like that and releasing intensely. But breathwork is like the most applicable thing you can use. Whether you're a parent with, with a few kids, you know, like one in, in the, in the supermarket crying and on the ground, what do you do? Or when you're working and you're under high stress underneath, what can you do? Well, breathwork. And I'm very fond of doing little tests. Because, you know, I'm introduced in a beautiful way by Rebecca and it would be like easy to just trust me. But what I really feel very strongly is that if you do a little test, you can show yourself that this stuff is actually working. And for the woo woo part, you know, like I'm, I have my, call it my intuitive side very much. Yet I don't feel like talking about it. It's more for you to experience. So, you know, like, I'm not gonna say like what you can feel, although like little safety measure. Or maybe a little bit what you feel, just so you know that it's normal. We're gonna first do a very short round, like five minutes, just to get into the mood. And just to tell you that I'm a complete breathwork nerd, yet this is my morning practice. Because I have a bunch of kids, you know, running around the house. So I, I don't wake up at 5:00 AM. I wake up like around 6:00, 6:30, but the kids are awake too. So, you know, like I, I take five minutes in the morning to do my breathwork. And then later in the day I do some more and I use it in a very applicable way. Like every time I have a meeting, I do a little bit of breathwork before, so to, just to make sure that I'm, I'm focused and I know what to say.
Tim, can I ask you a quick question before we get started? What is the like science behind breathwork? With what is, why does, what is it and why does it work?
It's a quick question, but, but it has like,
Sorry.
Let, let me stick to the benefits of breathwork. And this is something also for you to experience, but breathwork is a cardiovascular training. So it keeps your blood vessels healthy, simply said, lowers the blood pressure. You can remove stress. This is the test that I'm gonna show you that you will remove stress. You make, um, happy hormones like dopamine, endorphins and serotonin. So, you know, like if you have a lack of dose, you might be inclined to take a pill, especially in the US, you get them very easily. But you can also do breathwork to get your dopamine levels up, for example. And there's, there it's, it's reducing inflammation, chronic inflammation is a big problem in the, in the medical world or for people, I mean, for public health, let's call it like that. Um, and, um, well, there are more benefits and the science of, of breathwork. I'm, I'm actually writing a book now and I'm almost at the science part. And that means I'm researching too. And, you know, like I know a lot about breathwork. Yet if I'm going to research, there's so much more and it's really like the missing link between like, um, having a good life in private, but also be focused in, in the corporate world, for example, you know, to keep your focus, to calm down at command. There's so many things that I could say about breathwork, but I rather let you experience it. So I wanna make like a quick, a quick intro before we do this self-test. And that is that you are aware that if you get really stressed, right, anxiety and a panic attack, you may start to hyperventilate. High in the chest, really focus on the breath and not breathing out properly. This is a panicky state that is, you know, like often caused by some disruption in the nervous system because we're not in danger. I mean, of course, if I put you in ice bath, then you have a good reason. But most of the time we hyperventilate because, you know, like there's something off in our nervous system. Now, what most people don't know, so, um, the breath is a reaction to whatever event, whether it happens in our head or in front of us. And this is why we get stressed, we get a panic attack, we start to hyperventilate. What most people don't know that if you're able to slow down your breathing, so say you're, say you have a fear of flying and you're waiting to get to board and your heartbeat is already in your chest. You can use breathwork and especially slowing down your breathing by preventing to go into that panic attack. So theoretically, if you're always able to slow down your breathing, you can manage any form of stress. Yeah. So your ability to slow down your breathing equals your ability to handle stress, very simply said. So the test that I wanna do is one minute of slow breathing. So you're gonna breathe as slow as you can in whatever way. You will notice actually one minute of slow breathing is already a breathing exercise where you calm down. So maybe you notice you become maybe a bit tired. That's what your body needs is maybe a little bit more sleep. Or you will go into call it a meditative state just by slowing down your breathing. I used to be a meditation teacher and now I'm a breathwork instructor because any form of meditation, just slowing down your breathing works better. So you're gonna count how many times you breathe in a minute. Then we're gonna do five rounds of my signature breathing technique, which is called TT5 and TT stands for Tim's techniques. And it's me. Um, that's, I'm, I'm gonna explain it now, but I will guide you. So you really don't have to listen. We're taking five deep breath, about 80% in and out, nose in, mouth out. And then breath number six, we breathe in and we hold for 10 counts and then we breathe out slowly. That is one round and it takes one minute and five rounds takes five minutes. And then after that, and this is the interesting part, you know, I'm sure you will feel something or you feel calmer or whatever. That's up to you to share afterwards. But to count how many times you breathe afterwards, that is very interesting. Because then you can test for yourself if this stuff is working or not. Because let's be honest, you know, like maybe I'm just some kind of charlatan that is saying this and that and that. And you always wanna test for yourself, like fact check with your own body, kind of. So, um, is that clear or is there any question?
Also feel free to unmute, ask questions. You can also use the chat if that's easier for you guys.
For me, it's clear.
Yeah.
Thanks Joe. So start slowing down your breath. You didn't see that coming, did you? Start slowing down your breath and then I will count to three and time one minute. If you can really slow down your breathing, like try to prove me wrong. Without breath holds, so not holding your breath. And if you become out of breath, you get air hunger, you're trying a little bit too hard. So slow it down even more. You can keep your eyes open or maybe you wanna close them, whatever works for you. I'm gonna count to three and then time one minute. So breathe out now. One, two, three, and breathe as slow as you can. And try to make your breath out even slower than your breath in. And this is one minute. Just remember for yourself how many times you're breathing. Notice how you feel after one minute of slowing down your breathing. Now for the next five minutes, you can be dizzy and you can feel tingly sensations. So that's very normal. If anyone that is not on camera is driving a car, you cannot join. Simply because if you become dizzy, dangerous, right? Also in the water, I'm sure nobody's lying in the bath now, but it's not a good idea to join them. So we're breathing nose in, mouth out, about 80% in, 80% out. Please just follow my guidance. Here we go. Just breathing deeper. And a bit faster than we need to. Number five, a little bit deeper. Breathe out everything. And breathe in and hold. Hold it at the top 10 seconds. I'm counting. And breathe out completely. Round two. Five deep breaths. Extra deep. Everything out. And breathe in and hold. Again, hold it. To be a bit dizzy is normal, lightheaded, feeling your skin, it's all normal. Another five. And breathe out. Round three. Extra deep. Everything out. Push it out and breathe in and hold. Hold it at the top. And breathe out everything. Round four. Extra deep. Empty your lungs. In and hold. Again, 10 seconds. Keep your shoulders low. And breathe out everything. Last round. Five deep breaths. Extra deep. Everything out. In and hold for last time. Hold it. And breathe out. Now take one normal breath, take a deep breath in and out. And start slowing down your breathing again. And again, slow it down like you've never done before. I'm going to count to three and then again time one minute. If you can count now how many times you're breathing in a minute, you can measure the difference before and after five minutes of breathwork. Please breathe out now. One, two, three, timing, breathe as slow as you can. Hold the way to the top and make your breath out even slower than your breath in. And this is one minute. Now, this is just five minutes, but I go those getting out of your head and into your body in five minutes' time. I would love to know from how many breaths to how many breaths you went before and after. You can leave it in the chat too, but what is more important, of course, is how you feel after five minutes of breathwork.
I'll go first.
Calmer.
Oh, go, go, anybody speak, please. I don't like to go first.
I feel calmer, Tim.
Nice. Thank you Kelly.
Yeah, I noticed the out breath was actually significantly easier to slow down afterwards. That was where I noticed more change.
Nice. Thank you, Kenneth.
Me too, Kendall.
Yeah, that felt really good. I cut out a whole breath of the minute after the five. Um, the first time I had like two full breaths and then like an inhale on the minute. And then this time I had just two breaths, like I was halfway through the exhale, actually.
Amazing, amazing. So I'm, I'm guessing that, that, uh, all of you were, you know, breathing half as many times as you did before. So, you know, from a, from a breathwork nerd perspective, this means that you're twice as calm. But this is of course also for you to feel that. Um, I would like, just like to open the conversation now. If there's any question or if, if it was maybe for somebody like too much, because that is possible. So please feel free to ask your questions or whatever you want. And, and then after that, I thought to do like a little bit of a longer rounds.
I have shared this with you in the past, but I'll share it again in case no one else doesn't wanna share it. I am tightly wound. I am high strung. I am, I feel like I'm always kind of trying to catch my breath and, and breathwork. The result of it is that I feel much more relaxed, but during it, my, my heart rate is like I'm, and one of the things about that, that Tim has often reminded me is the way we breathe matters. So if you're trying to breathe just through like right here, it's not gonna help as much as if you're taking full belly breaths. But it might just be my tolerance of having that lightheaded feeling is less than other people's. But is it true that some people just have more of a, of a sort of parasympathetic response to the breathing?
Yeah. So, so what is happening actually during the deeper breathing, we, our heart rate goes up. So a little bit about the science then. So we are activating the sympathetic nervous system, but we do that in a controlled way. And the analogy of running is very, um, makes it for me to really understand it. You know, a high heartbeat is bad for us. If it's a chronic high heartbeat. You know, uh, uh, when you run, your heartbeat goes up to say 120. If you would have 120 heartbeat always, you probably wouldn't become 50 years old. You know, you would die before that, just because you're unhealthy. Now the same goes for the sympathetic nervous system, because if we go for a run, we heat up, our blood starts flowing faster, we need to breathe more. We're activating the sympathetic nervous system. But the result is that afterwards, we have a lower heartbeat. And so to activate your sympathetic nervous system at will and under control is actually training yourself in that, call it the stress part of our nervous system. That means that in everyday life, you will be less stressed. And if you would have twins, one with a running practice and the other not, the one with a runner, running practice that is deliberately getting his heartbeat up has a lower heartbeat in everyday life. Now the same goes for breathwork. Um, if you do your breathwork, you take it even five minutes like this, you take it away the whole day, you're more breath aware. You remember to, as Rebecca is saying, to breathe more to the belly, there's twice as much lung capacity there. So with every breath, you take up twice as much air, if you would breathe through the belly instead of through the chest. And, um, well, the same goes as, as it is for running, but then with breathwork, we're, we're speeding up our breathing, but in a very gentle way. We're not like puffing away because I don't know you guys yet, you know, and not everybody's on camera and this is a Zoom session. So we take it step by step. Much like a heartbeat, you know, um, certain philosophy, I'm not sure if it's really true, but it resonates with me. You have only so many heartbeats in your life. So if you have a relatively low heartbeat, you will likely live longer and also be calmer.
I love that. I've never heard that before. That's such, I'm gonna use that guys. That is good.
And the same goes for heartbeats as numbers of breath and they're very related. Because if you're slowing down your breathing, your heartbeat would go down. Yet we take five breaths and we do that in a faster and a deeper way, that is actually releasing like a little bit of adrenaline. Your heartbeat goes up and then in the hold, the opposite happens. And when we breathe out slowly, so you could say this is like mini interval training compared to running. With, with running, you get more stamina and with breathwork, you're able to breathe slower in a natural way without even thinking of it.
That's really, uh, no one's explained it that way to me before and that's really helpful. Yeah, that it's sort of like a controlled stress.
It is.
Intentional, so that your body knows how to respond to stress when it's not intentional, better.
It's, it's a self-imposed hormetic stress, you call it in the medical world. So you could say this about exercise, you can say this about fasting, we know that it's healthy. You know, it's, it's also, you know, putting your body under stress, sports or exercise, I said it already. Breathwork with deep breathing breath hold techniques that my techniques in principle are, I have some other techniques to get over a panic attack and things like that. But in principle, we breathe deeper and faster than we need to and we do a breath hold. And these are very intelligent, uh, techniques, if you look at the science behind it. Because of this, the very simple version is you create breath stamina, meaning you're able to slow down your breathing in everyday life. So it's always my goal to make people breathe like for five minutes, you know, like do this in the morning, maybe when you make your coffee or, um, do five minutes of breathing. And if you are consistent with that, likely you will do for an important meeting or maybe you're waiting somewhere. You will do more breathwork and without actually putting time in it, maybe you do half an hour or an hour of breathwork, but it's only five minutes in the morning and the rest is killing time. Back of a taxi for me, I don't, this is really, you know, like I, I'm, I'm, I'm not like Mr. Zen who is enlightened. You know, people ask me that sometimes. No, of course not. You know, I got five kids. Come on. Yet what is really good in my life, I don't wait. You know, I just don't wait because if I would be waiting somewhere, it's time to do some breathwork. And I have a palette of techniques that I just don't get bored, you know? So that is a really good part of my life and it all starts with five minutes in the morning.
Yeah, I like that it's bite sized. It's not like you need 30 minutes to do this, that any amount that you do is sort of better than not doing it. Um, not to call anyone out, but to call John Paul out a little bit. I know that you're a theater person. I don't know if you do, I don't know, yeah, you sing because you love karaoke. How does, how does, um, breathwork kind of sync up with warming up your voice to sing? Or I guess anybody else who?
Well, look, just imagine that you're highly stressed, you'd be talking like this, probably also high in tone, like that. If you do like even one round of this, you'll be speaking like way slower, low in the belly with a beautiful voice. So it has a direct effect on your voice. But maybe Paul, uh, JP, maybe you can sing for us.
Yeah, he's like, I'm on mute.
Yeah, right now? I got it. Hold on. We, we, we got this. In the merry month of June, from me home, my daughter left the girls to do nearly broken, had to loot the father dear, kiss me darling mother, drink a pint of beer to meet the hint to touch the corner. Lee, I was born, cut the stopper, thunder, banished, ghost and goblins, battle, bear, brooks, frightened of the bugs, frightened of the dogs, all the rocky roads, along the mountain, two, three, four, five, had there in the end of the rocky road, all the way to Dublin, rock for a lot of rock.
All right. And we're gonna announce you in 20 minutes again.
Oh, man. Yeah. Now you gotta do it again with more breathing. All right. Back to it. Thank you, John Paul. That was amazing. I didn't think you were gonna actually do it. That was amazing. All right, Tim, back to you.
So, um, go ahead, Joe. No problem. Talk to you later. You can see the replay.
Yeah, it's being recorded. Exactly.
So, um, are you up for some more? Yeah. So, so if you became very dizzy, just again, the safety measures, not driving a car, I said it already. But if you become very dizzy, put your elbows like on the table in front of you. Or maybe you have like a seat with something to lean back against. And you can always skip around, you know, this is your session. And if you, you're breathing the rest of your life, this is scientifically proven. So, um, if you wanna skip around, that's really fine. You know, there's no problem. You can always perform something like this, you know, and maybe Rebecca. You know, there's no problem. You can always perform something like this, you know, and maybe Rebecca can send you like a YouTube video later where that if people want their guidance in the morning, they can just put up that video. It comes with image too, sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm like the king in making bad jokes. All right, so no more talking. Let's breathe. So what we're gonna do, we're gonna start exactly the same. And then we're gonna move, call it up the mountain. So from TT five to TT ten, ten breath, twenty, and then we're gonna go down the mountain. So, um, I think this breathing exercise will take about ten minutes. And then I will put on some woo woo music to make sure that you can relax afterwards for something like five minutes, I'm thinking. And then we have a little time to chat or maybe I can answer your questions. And then we're ready before the hour is over, all right? Because I do respect your time and thank you for showing up. Okay, so let's go. Taking five deep breaths, we're starting exactly the same. Extra deep. Everything out. And breathe in and hold. Hold it at the top, shoulders low. And breathe out. Let's go for ten breaths. Another five. A bit deeper. Out more. In deep. Empty your lungs. Keep on breathing out, 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 out. And then take a deep breath in and hold. Hold it. Shoulders low. And focus on the sensations in your body. Dizziness, tingly sensation, maybe some part of your body is showing a sign. Getting completely out of the head and into the body. And breathe out. Slowly building up the breath holds. Let's take twenty breaths. Keep on breathing in this space. If you feel you become too dizzy and it becomes uncomfortable, you can breathe a little bit less deep in. If you feel like, ooh, I like this, I want more, you can breathe deeper in. So you are in full control of this session. Know that. Another eight. Five. If it feels good, deeper in. More out. Last two. Out more. Deep in. Out everything. Breathe in deep and hold. Hold it at the top. Gonna hold longer now. Notice the sensations. Your body talking to you. It's all safe. Let's take an extra zip to fill up the lungs completely. Now your lungs are under pressure, stretching up the ribs, increasing lung capacity. In about ten seconds, we're gonna let go of our breath and then hold after breathing out. So another five, four, three. Let go of your breath, about fifty to eighty percent out and then hold. So you're not breathing everything out and hold your breath afterwards. And now if you can notice your heartbeat, you will feel and see it go down. For the people that I can see, raise a hand if you're at the end of your breath hold. Let's breathe out the rest. Push your breath hold for five, four, three, two, one, breathe in deep and hold. Hold it. Just ten seconds. Well deserved breath in and a well deserved breath hold. Breathe out now. Well, let's go down the mountain, taking ten deep breaths. Breathing more conscious. You can use your lungs more than before. Use that. Breathe deep. Another five. Last two, extra deep. Out more. And again, extra deep. And breathe out everything. In deep and hold. Hold it there, shoulders nice and low. Focus on your body sensations, whether it's in your head or in your body. Feel. Extra zip. Fill up the lungs completely. In ten seconds, again, we're gonna let go of our breath and hold after breathing out. Here we go. Hold it here, wherever you feel is the right spot. And again, show me a hand. If you think you need to breathe. Breathe the rest out. Another five, four, three, two, one, in deep. And hold, ten seconds only. And breathe out. One more round, five deep breath and then we have time to relax. Five deep breath. Last one, extra deep. Empty your lungs. Breathe in and hold. Extra zip. Let go of your breath, hold after breathing out. Hold it. And again, raise your hand if you need to breathe. Rebecca, can you make me co-host? Thanks. Breathe the rest out. Five, four, three, two, one, in deep, hold. And hold it. Let go of your breath. Let's take a few minutes of well deserved rest. I will put on some music. Time to rest. So feel free to take more time. It's like when you do breath work, you take me time. So if you want to stay with your eyes closed or take a little nap, that's fine. If you have any question, I'm, I'm here. On the other side of the world, but still.
That doesn't matter anymore, right? Because we're all just here on the Zoom screen. Oh damn, you know what I was thinking at the, at the end part, I was like, this is more relaxing and better for me than going to the spa, plus it's free. You know, like this is something we can do. We spend all this money to go de-stress and really we can take some breaths and, but it's better when you do it with us.
Yeah, that's why, you know, like I'm of course a breathwork coach and, and I think we're open now to, we, you know, I can coach one hour sessions if anybody's interested. But I call it more breathwork edu- ed- education. Even if in one hour we just breathe, you take it with you and you become like more aware of your breath. Even if in one hour we just breathe, you take it with you and you become like more aware of your breathing. And, and really see like, wow, I mean, of course, I'm a nerd, you know, like, wow, really? Is this possible? And it doesn't stop, you know? Every time I learn something new, I'm like, also, really?
I mean, I do feel like I just took a nap, you know?
Yeah.
And that's pretty cool. Anyone else comments, thoughts, did they come in being like, this is gonna be really weird and skeptical, and then it was great, it was horrible, anything?
You can be honest.
Yeah. Anyone here?
I liked how it was like, very short term, you know, like five minutes here, ten minutes there. Like, the session that I did with Brandon, that was like an hour, you know, of like intense breath work, which was good. But I liked that this was like a different variation of that, that I could, I feel like apply a little more to my day-to-day life, you know?
Absolutely.
It's so applicable.
Yeah, I like also that it's like, it's something that you think about when you're doing it, but that you can take through the rest of the day, like, it just slows you down, you know, in the future, like that muscle memory type of concept of, you don't have to keep actively thinking about it all the time, but the more you do it, I'm sure it becomes just natural too.
Since Kino has two magical children that never have temper tantrums in the grocery store.
I don't know, yeah, exactly, I don't know how you do the, do the five, but major props to you, but.
Well, if you have a lot, you can just put them together and leave the house. Guys, take care of each other.
Jenna, if you would like to share, I'd love to hear any feedback from you, because I feel like you're probably the lead, the most woo-woo resistant of group, other than maybe me.
I don't think that's true. Um, no, it's interesting, so for me, the point of comparison, I actually coach heart rate variability breathing.
Well, any form of breathing, like here, if you would measure your heart rate variability, whether you slow it down or you speed it up, it immediately goes up, so whatever.
Sure, yeah, no, 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 well, that was clear as it was going, right? So it takes you to a same space, right? It's just like a.
Different angle, yeah.
Yeah.
But likely, because I don't, I don't know, I didn't know there's heart rate for variability breathing, um, but it's likely slowing it down?
The, so it's, yeah, it's generally slowing it down, and it is longer on the out breath than the in breath, right? Yeah, and it pairs with, um, apps, right? So there's like a bunch of different ones, anyway, like, I have a sensor for my son, right? And then, because then what you get is, similar to how Tim had us just count our breaths, right? With the heart rate variability, like, we do it as biofeedback, so you actually see a graph of your heart rate variability as you do your breathing, right? And so you can, for people who are more visual, right, or who won't, don't have the body awareness, for whatever reasons, right? They then get the, the visible feedback of calming their physiology.
Yeah, and, and that is like, most apps are, are about slowing down the breathing, breathe out longer, and that works. And then what works even better is first taking a few deeper breaths, you can, are you wearing any machine now?
No, I thought about it when we started, but my son used it, it's like over there in his room.
I was, I had my heart rate on my Apple Watch, and I was watching it go up, and it varied by like, it goes low like sixty-five and as high as like seventy-eight.
Yeah, but the heart rate variability is a different measure.
Oh, look.
Um, it's not good on the Apple Watch, no offense to the Apple Watch, it's like.
You need a garment.
Okay. Yeah, well, I, I wear a garment, and even that, like, the ones that are made for heart rate variability are better.
I can tell you that my heart rate varies, how about that?
Yeah, 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 um, yeah, no, I think, it's funny, we don't talk about what I really do, but like neurofeedback, I mean, it's science-based, but this is science-based. I think, it's funny, my friends think I'm very woo-woo, like, they think I'm the most out-there person they know.
Me too. Not really. Um, anyone else? John Paul, we got a beautiful singing, oh, he's on, he's on camera. If anyone needs to go, obviously, but any feedback from you, anything you noticed as, as the singer of the group?
I will be honest, I had to take a call midway through. That's why I just came back and my, my video is back on. Um, but it was so lovely coming back with everyone's eyes closed and listening to, honestly, music that I would have, uh, played in the car. Uh, just driving down the road. Like, a weird CD that I picked up at a woo-woo marketplace at some point. It's great, um, and you saw me yawning consistently after, uh, we came back. I would, I would love to absolutely re-watch this recording and follow along, um, and that's good, what I'm gonna do.
Yeah, exactly. Well, for those of you that are watching this later, Tim is new to our team, and he'll be doing one-on-one breath work with clients as they first start. But if you wanna hang out with him more, those of you that are past clients or whatever, um, you know where to find him, which is on this email, and he'll, will follow up with the links that he was talking about. Tim, is there anything else, or is there anything else I don't ask?
I, I want to, to ask you, you want me to share my link here in the chat?
Great idea, that's a great idea, phenomenal idea.
Do you do any in-person events in Amsterdam? I have a good friend that lives there.
I do, yeah, like, um, I'm doing breath work, I teach at a yoga school around the corner, and I'm doing like, now and then here, I'm traveling a lot, so. Life in Amsterdam is, I'm, I'm doing like every two months or something, I'm doing an event here.
Okay, are you actually in Amsterdam right now? First time I met him, he was in Barcelona.
I'm in Amsterdam now, yeah, and I'm just back from Brazil three weeks, and I'm going to Phoenix in one week.
It's very warm.
But I'm, I'm giving like bi-weekly lessons at a pretty famous yoga school here on the overtone, so.
Great, I'll look up on your website and share with my friend.
And you can find my WhatsApp also there, so.
Tim, do you also have like a, a list of tour dates, and what cities you'll be in at what time?
We can come.
Yeah, it's on my website, timfromthefleet/events. So we'll be in London, Norway, Berlin, uh, Brazil, again, Japan, I will give a retreat in Japan, end of November. Uh, end of October, sorry, and I'm missing one US. I think that's it for this year.
Um, so in other words, we're very grateful that you gave us so much of your time, you're obviously a very busy and important man, and we appreciate you. I appreciate my community for showing up and breathing, it's a vulnerable thing to do, and it's powerful, and these are all just the little different ways we can be more in agency, you know? And I love the idea that you can do this anytime, anywhere, you don't have to be like, excuse me, I need to go lay down, I need to get a yoga pillow, you know?
Hmm, nothing like that.
Yeah. Not that we don't love meditation, guys. Um, thank you, thank you, thank you again, everybody else. Friday, um, Tim, you are a pleasure, and we are all grateful for you, I know Kelly.
Thank you, I'm grateful for you too, and for everybody joining and seeing this later.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Bye.